I do have an electronic, too, if you need it for the grades.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We'll go ahead and call them in to order. It's Tuesday, June 18th, 2019. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes and reports received and filed.
Read the collective's, uh, May 2019. Please file.
Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Blues recognition day. Guess you didn't get the memo.
You're up here taking selfies with Carrie.
Yeah, right with the city. We're not good enough for you. Uh, we've got Campo Board of Brokers tomorrow. Brooks Park Room Cutting Ceremony Thursday at noon. Chamber Connections Thursday afternoon. That's about it till next Tuesday.
Go ahead, Sam.
Uh, I've got cap region board meeting tonight. Tomorrow night's at Lyons Award and Stinner. Thursday, I've got, uh, value school of nursing meeting, Oak Street, and then also the Immaculate Conception Bell Tower barbecue. And you can get it to go. All you gotta do is swing through and get it to go. That's all I've got.
Meeting with Estes today at 11:00. Talks about personnel. Brooks Park. Pretty light week, looks like. Admin meeting next week, is that right? Tuesday? And MSP CP meeting is Tuesday as well. Did you guys get that notification?
Yeah. Okay. Commission comments? I'm gonna go out of order because Judge Joyce is here and we have, uh, justice and mental health grants, so we're gonna let you do that and then we'll let you go on to your more important things.
I wore blue.
Thanks for jumping in there.
Yes, uh, the, uh, the 19th Circuit's going to apply for a justice and mental health grant we have been working on for the last several weeks. It's, uh, three-fourths of a million dollars. It would be over a three-year period. The first six months would be just a planning part. And we're asking that the commission submit, uh, show that their continued support for the pretrial services program, it would add an additional person at some point and, uh, to really work on mental health issues and substance abuse. And we're hoping to work with the sheriff's office and the police department and all our other criminal justice coordinating partners to identify people that have substance abuse and mental health and get them treatment and get them access to services immediately on their arrest. And we have another, uh, the rest of the grant would, uh, take care of almost all the other expenses, but, uh, we think this would be a wonderful thing for the county and for the citizens of Colton County.
I agree.
Thank you. And we're submitting it tomorrow, so if you all could sign it, that will help us get that grant on the way.
I move that we sign the grant application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your continued cooperation. We do have a new Katie Donan, and she's our new drug court coordinator. She has worked for the state for six years in that same position, and we're quite excited to have her here with us.
Good.
All right, welcome.
Welcome.
There you are. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Now we will go back to our regular agenda. Bids and contracts. Contract warden signing 2019 asphalt overlay program.
Which one did you have first on the list, Sam?
Uh, asphalt.
Asphalt overlay.
Uh, we had two bids on the asphalt overlay program, and they were Higgins Asphalt Paving and Jefferson Asphalt Company. Both pretty close bids, actually. Higgins is the low bidder at $900,768.73. Don't really have any more to say on that, other than I, um, was looking at this this morning and realized that I had not contacted the city of Lowman just to confirm that they did want to do this. And I probably need to do that first before we actually awarded, or if you want to award a contingent upon their approval. That way I could just come back and have you sign it at some point, Sam. That'd be fine, too. But, um, it's under what the estimate was, so I don't see any reason why they wouldn't. And I was communicating with them through the process, through the bid process, but, uh, it just dawned on me that I had not contacted them after the bid. So I probably ought to do that first before we actually award it.
Did you guys take a look at the, uh, down them, down at the bottom there? Um, for the downtown complex upgrades?
That would, um, and just to clarify on that, that was bid with the same proposal, but it's a separate contract if you all choose to do that. So you could select either of the two on that.
Do you guys have, uh, any time to visit with Eric on what all that included? Or, um, you guys got any thoughts on moving forward with that as well?
I'd like to get it done.
I, yeah.
It's over what we have budgeted. So it's just gonna, I forget what we had listed last week, but...
Um, maybe just some visuals.
I'm all right with awarding a contingent upon talking to.
Lowman.
Lowman, yeah.
And if, if they want to be included in it. I, I know that they do, but, uh, I just do not give them the results, so...
What have you been doing?
Oh, you name it.
The, the overlay work on the downtown complex, it's a little tricky, as you would imagine. Met with, uh, the two bidders the day before the bid, walked through it, so they had a better idea of what, what to expect. Uh, we bid each lot as a, each one basically as a lump sum, not, uh, splitting them out into tonnage and whatnot on that, just to make it a little bit easier where they just put a, a lump price on each little spot. It does include, uh, some crack fill and seal on two parking lots and then more or less upgrading, rebuilding, a combination of some variable milling and, and thickness overlay to get the parking lots around the Carnegie Building to where they drain properly and fix any areas that are busted up, broken. Uh, includes with that, to make all that work, we need to do some concrete work around there, too. Number of different ways you could do that. You could, the new prevailing wage law has a provision in there where we can do up to $10,000 worth of, of improvements without competitively bidding. So if you could just select a contractor to do some of the work, that would be an option, since it is a public works project. And we've utilized that. That's been pretty beneficial to us. But it just depends on how you want to go about doing that work. You could, um, the other improvements around the courthouse, you could possibly throw that in with that bid, too. Timing with asphalt, you wanna lay asphalt, preferably they said on this, they'd wanna do that in the summer, uh, just 'cause it's a lot of handwork. Be better to do that earlier in, you know, the summer rather than wait till the fall, so... I don't think it's gonna get any cheaper.
No.
Um, I think it's a decent price. It is a little higher than what my estimate was, but it was really hard to get a real good idea of what that was gonna cost, so I think it's, it's reasonable.
So it could be up to additional $10,000 worth of concrete work done with that project as well?
Yeah. I know that there's some things for sure we want to do to correct some drainage issues. Some would be a little more, just to kind of clean things up. Wouldn't really affect what we're doing with the asphalt. But just the full package, it'd be nice to do everything all at once.
Yeah, I'd make a sense not to do it all at once.
If you're gonna have a contractor doing concrete work, it's get them in once and do it all. So that would be, um, a separate contract if you choose to do that. Parking lot work. And I didn't have it on the agenda to approve that today. We can do that next week if you, if you want to think on it a little bit, too.
I mean, I think we ought to try to get it done. It's more than we budgeted, but I think there's more work there than what we thought, too, so...
It's...
Yep, I agree.
Yeah, it was, what, $8,000 more and more if we need to do the other stuff, but... Just can't get you a court bid now.
Turn it.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
So award the asphalt contingent upon Lowman. And then you want me to bring you a contract on the other stuff? The courthouse or the, uh, parking lot work? Do that next week, or how do you want to do that?
Yeah, I want to get it together. You got the contract for the other stuff?
I just have the asphalt overlay for the county stuff.
Yeah, and we can do that one today and then award the other one when you get the contract?
Yeah, which would be next week. I could get that.
Okay.
So the recommendation is to Higgins Asphalt?
Yes. Recommend to Higgins Asphalt paving in the amount of $900,768.73.
Okay. You said you had a contract?
Yes.
So I move that we award the 2019 asphalt overlay program to Higgins Asphalt paving contingent upon approval from the village of Lowman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, now you want to wait until we, yeah, we'll wait until, uh, you get that clarification. Okay, contract ward and signing 2019 chip seal program.
Okay, on the chip seal project, Missouri Petroleum is the, the low bidder at $315,073.10. Done work with them many, many years and excellent company and recommend approval of that contract to them.
Good?
Yeah.
Move that we award and sign the contract for the 2019 chip seal program with Missouri Petroleum.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the bid results discussion, county downtown, that's what we already did, so we don't need... 209 Adams Street contract amendment.
For some reason, they didn't have it ready.
We already voted on that one. So this is just signing the amendment. Call cap bowl.
Okay.
Don't get signed, Sam.
Okay, I want to sign it.
We already did that. We did it like last, uh, we did it a week ago or so.
We had a closed session. We just discussed. Then we had an open session. That's when they voted on it.
Was it that now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So have we not closed yet, then?
No.
Oh, yeah, we did. It's, it is ours.
How did we close without that document?
That's a question for Sharon. But they did all of them.
And we got keys? A lot of keys. Okay. Unfinished business generator discussion.
Heard your guidance last week. I went in and got two more bids. Called two contractors, called, uh, Stark and Septagon. They both came out Monday. Told them I need to bid back as soon as possible. Septagon was good and got the bid back to me by Wednesday. I still have not heard anything back from Stark. Gave you all the sheets this morning with the bids on it. Talked to Jennifer yesterday and she said we can just do a no bid for Stark. She hasn't responded back. Total for the project to, to replace the old generators, $30,448 bucks. And it's a cooperative agreement to purchase a generator, cooperative agreement for electric, summon to do the gas line, and then lowest bid is right now is GBH to do the replacement of the doors, bolts and seals and all that.
So do we need something from them, a form saying no bid?
Jennifer didn't say we have anything.
Okay, so I don't have a problem getting it done, but only a week to do some kind of bid like this makes it seem like an alternative to some people, but it's a busy time right now. We've got a whole lot of stuff going on, so I'd rather have something from them saying, "No, not gonna bid it. Just go on without me," or, uh, give them some more time.
Well, now these are public.
Yeah, now these, we've got public bids, so...
Yeah.
I've only got two bids, so we can reject them. I'm just saying, we need to have something saying no bid, right, and just give them one week to do this.
Did we have the, a deadline?
I told them I wanted it as soon as possible. Both companies that came out Monday. Septagon had it back to me by Wednesday.
I've done it before for things for like the little city stuff. And if it was gonna be a no bid, I send it back with no bid on there, so if they haven't it... If we don't have to, we can work around it. I was just asking if we had to.
I would just award it to JBH.
I mean, it's not a huge job, and so, anyway, I get what you're saying. Everybody's busy, and so sometimes you get to stuff and sometimes you don't, and sometimes you're too busy to do it. Anyway. I'd, I'd say we just move forward on it. You should got a whole lot of heartburn about it.
As long as we don't go to jail over it. Just saying, better ways to do it. We need to make sure next time we do this to tell them. Either send it back and say, "No bid, I don't want to do it," or, or something.
They still might not, they still might not send it back, though. I mean, that's kind of like...
Then put a date on there and say if, uh, we don't get this email back from you by such and such date, then we're gonna take it as a no bid. Because right now we technically have two bids. We do not have a no bid, because we didn't put any kind of a timeline on it or date to work with, so... If he sends one in tomorrow, then, and it's less. I mean, time is of the essence. We want to get this done. And that's, you can put a paragraph in there to that effect.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much longer comes, you know, the price for that generator, either.
I'm okay. Go ahead and proceed with it. I just, I think we need to do it a little different next time.
I see your point, Jennifer.
So, yeah, go ahead. Let's move whether it's good or done.
Do you need action on, uh, the door replacement from us today?
I would probably...
I mean, they have it all fall within.
Yeah, everything.
Cooperative purchasing or?
Yeah.
Or under the...
Ten.
...so...
I don't know if you want to do it. We'll have to probably do a contract with accountants for the generator, which I'll have to get with them on that. Argue with Jennifer.
I move that we award the door replacement to GBH builders.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Justice and mental health, council payable review.
I'd ask for approval of council payable pending review.
Summit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of management rep letter for the audit.
Um, so this is a letter that we sign every year. It has to be completed before you guys can accept the audit. It just says that we've done all of our responsibilities for the audit. This list has everything that we have knowledge of. And Jill's reviewed it as well.
Is this what we went through over last week?
No. This is just an annual letter that we have to sign before the audits, audit is accepted.
Want to take a look at this, Jeff?
No, it's one every year.
Are you calling this just a management letter?
Management representation letter.
All right, I move that we sign the management representation letter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 2018 audit report.
I'm Amanda Schultz. This is Heidi Chick. We're with Williams Keepers. We recently completed the 2018 financial statement audit. So we are here this morning to go over our summary report. We won't put you guys through too much misery and go through the entire report this morning. So the entire report, as you can tell, is, um, quite significant. That's because the county prepared a CAFER again this year, a comprehensive annual financial report. Um, this is a sign of excellence in financial reporting, because there is additional information included, um, that's in addition to GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles requirements. So there's also an introductory section and a statistical section, which are additional GFOA requirements. We're just gonna touch on the highlights of the reports that we issued as a result of our audit. The first is on the financial statements. We issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. Um, again, that was as of, um, for the county's year ending December 31st, 2018. And this is the best opinion that you can get, and it means that third-party users can rely on these financial statements. So the actual statements themselves, the notes that support the financial statements, everything included therein. Moving on to page two of the summary report, management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. Um, the county auditor, so Kristen and her office, actually prepared the financial statements. Uh, we've prepared the footnotes, but her office did review and approve them. Just a reminder that we use our judgment in determining how to audit the entity, so we perform a risk assessment on the county's balances, transactions, processes and controls um, in order to focus our attention or audit procedures on areas where the financial statements might be misstated. That means we don't take a look at every balance or every transaction, but we do enough work in order to be able to give that clean opinion on the financial statements. As part of our audit, we evaluate the appropriateness of accounting policies, the reasonableness of accounting estimates, and the overall financial statement presentation. The financial statements include two different sets of financials. So on pages 25 through 26 are the government-wide financial statements. Those are full accrual, so they include all of the county's funds, as well as capital assets, long-term debt, any other liabilities. And then the fund financial statements are on pages 27 through 32. Those are separated into governmental funds, which are primarily supported from tax revenue and other general sources, and use the modified accrual basis of accounting. And there are also proprietary fund financial statements, so that's revenue from user charges, and those statements are full accrual. So again, the capital assets, long-term debt are reflected in those fund financial statements. We've included some summarized financial information here on page two. It really just summarizes the highlights from those government-wide financial statements. We've included 2018, so the most recent audit, and also comparative information for 2017 and 2016. Um, part of the financial statements or the CAFER includes the management's discussion and analysis on pages four through 24, and that discusses, um, in great detail the changes in the various categories that are summarized here, so I wasn't gonna go over those today. Are there any questions on the financial statements or the comprehensive annual financial report?
Nope.
We also performed a single audit this year. That's because the county had expenditures of federal awards in excess of $750,000. So that increases the work that we have to perform and adds two additional reports, um, to the financial statements. The county had federal expenditures of approximately $1.1 million during 2018. Um, the programs are listed in the schedule of expenditures of federal awards in the financial statements. The major program we audited this year was the Child Support Enforcement Grant Program. So the two reports we issue as a result of the single audit, one is on internal control and compliance related to financial reporting. There are no material weaknesses and no instances of non-compliance included in that letter. And the second report is on internal control and compliance related to major federal programs. Had also had an unmodified or a clean opinion and no findings on compliance.
The second report that we issue is an auditor's communication letter. Uh, this consists of comments about the audit process and the results of our audit. It's normally addressed to what we call those charged with governance, uh, the entity that provides the oversight. Uh, in this case for the county, the commissioners provide that oversight, so the letter is actually addressed to them. We did not note any transactions that we thought were both unusual and significant, nothing that didn't have authoritative guidance. There is no change in accounting, uh, policies and procedures or, or standards, so this year is pretty consistent with last year when you look at the statements and look at the footnotes. We listed some upcoming new accounting standards that will be applicable in the next two years, so Kristen will have to assess the impact, or potential impact, on the county's financial statements and see what changes those might encompass. Uh, we evaluate the financial, the estimates included in the financial statements to make sure they're reasonable and make sense. Anytime you do a financial statement at a specific point in time, some things you know with certainty, but some things you have to estimate, and so we look at that estimation process. The most significant estimates within the financial statements are the allowance for uncollectible receivables, the estimated useful life of capital assets, the claims incurred but not paid for the health, uh, health insurance, and then pension asset and liabilities for the participation in SURF and then loggers. We did find the accounting records to be in very good order. Uh, we didn't propose any significant adjustments. We did propose some adjustments related to those pension things, and it's only because the information comes out later while we're doing the audit that we, we do those. Uh, but overall, the accounting records were in very good shape. Uh, no disagreements with management. Everyone is fully cooperative throughout the process. We talked to a lot of different people, asked for a lot of different information, and everyone takes the time to respond, to get us what we need. And the audits process, we feel, went very smoothly this year. And we really do appreciate the cooperation we get from everybody during the process. Any questions on the overall audit process and those high-level results? Obviously, the letter has more detail, but high-level, the audit went well. The last report we issue is a management letter. Uh, we look at inter, internal control of the county, basically to plan our audit procedures. Uh, we look at who does what, how information flows, uh, so that we can do that risk assessment process that Amanda talked about. We don't do enough work to give an opinion on internal control, so we don't give an opinion on it. But as part of that process, if we note things, uh, we write them down and evaluate to see how significant they are. We look at the design of the system, as well as whether or not you implemented that system. Um, at the end of the engagement, when we evaluate all those comments, we did not note any material weaknesses, so that's really a very positive thing for the county. Uh, that's the best thing that you can have. Uh, we do have some, uh, recommendations for the county to consider in the management letter, but again, no material weaknesses, uh, to report. And I know, Sam, you're disappointed we didn't read every single page, but...
No, thank you. We are gonna have a test, though, later, aren't we?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes. Multiple choice, at least. Any questions at all on any reports we issue or the process that we go through? It's a lot of effort on the county to get ready and to prepare this nice thick document. And like I said, we really appreciate the cooperation.
So could you go over a little bit about GADB 87 and guess the 89 that looks like we'll have to implement in 2020?
87 has to do with leases. Currently, under accounting standards, you evaluate whether or not it's a capital lease or an operating lease. A capital lease means, basically, you're using a lease to finance the purchase of a piece of equipment or property. So there's a couple of requirements you look at. But if you basically lease a piece of equipment for it's almost its entire useful life, or what the dollar amount you're paying for a lease is so much of the fair market value, you actually record the asset and you record the lease payable. If it doesn't meet any of those specific requirements to be a capital lease, it's called an operating lease. Most of the time, when you pay rent for a building, or you pay rent for a copier, or something, you rent equipment on an as-needed basis, that's an operating lease. And when you make that lease payment, it goes to expense. Under this new standard, that's going to change. Under the new standard, any lease that's more than 12 months is going to be treated differently. The capital leases will still be treated essentially the same. Those operating leases, if they're more than 12 months, you're now going to have a right-to-use asset on your balance sheet, and it's going to be offset by a lease payable. So it's going to change your balance sheet. It should not significantly change your income statement, but will definitely change your balance sheet for those operating leases, which is a big change. The for-profit world is already dealing with that. Their standard is effective a little bit sooner than your standard is. And in the for-profit world, it's a really big deal because so many companies lease equipment. So that's really what it is. It's going to change your balance sheet, but really not your income statement. Accounting for interest costs incurred. This has to do with capitalized interest during a construction period. In the past, when you've constructed assets and you have debt during that construction period, in the past, you've had to capitalize that interest as part of the cost of construction. So it went into the basis of that asset. Going forward, you don't have to do that anymore. So it's going to make life easier during construction. Does that make sense?
On a major, major construction project that would finance over several years.
Right. In the past, you had to calculate the interest portion related to that construction, and it would be just another piece of the puzzle for capitalizing costs. Now you don't have to do that anymore.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
No, thank you. And we're going to table the discussion of the body scanner for jail to an upcoming meeting. First reading of Budget Adjustment Number Nine.
Budget Adjustment Number Nine.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
It is for $3,735.77. It's the law enforcement, and it is a payment on the one vehicle that was deemed from the tornado. So there's a check behind there.
Oh.
First reading, no action today.
Aw, shucks.
So that's an in-and-out?
Yes.
Okay, first reading of Budget Adjustment Number Ten.
This is for $12,566. This is another vehicle at the juvenile center that was actually totaled. So no action today, but we'll bring it up in 10 days.
Okay.
Is that for just the $12,000? Or will it be, how will the remaining portion of that new vehicle?
Transfer in there, or they will be soon if it's not.
Yeah, I see.
Or we can have the exact price of the new one.
Okay.
Okay. Mobile radios purchase approval, Steve?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are seeking permission to purchase two mobile radios for the two new ambulances that we're purchasing due to the damage of the prior ambulances. The ones that we had slated for those have gone to the command vehicles. So we're just trying to slot those over to the new vehicles that are coming.
Good.
Do we have an idea on cost, or?
The cost total is $11,284. That's for both of them together, including freight. They're being purchased on the state contract.
Okay.
I move that we approve the radio purchase.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Emergency lighting purchase approval.
So this is for the second command vehicle. We are purchasing it from a different vendor than we did the first time. We're getting a better price on this one. The total price is going to be $3,733.62 for the full outfit for the command vehicle.
Did you already purchase the one for the other Tahoe?
Yes, we did.
Okay. I move that we approve the emergency lighting purchase.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, used ambulance sale.
I don't believe so.
Used ambulance sale.
So we have the used ambulance that we are attempting to sell. We do have a buyer for it, and so we're seeking approval to sell to that buyer.
And this is a transit that we don't use very often?
Yes, sir.
So in the past, we've always listed vehicles and items on surplus and taken bids. We dispose of items the same way that we purchase them. I haven't seen what the offer is here, but do you guys not have plans to do that with this vehicle?
We usually don't get squat for them when we do that, and so, anyway. Usually, when we put them in surplus, they're worn out and we usually get a little to nothing for them, so.
So you don't want to try GOV deals or Purple Wave or something like that first and set a minimum bid? To see if it goes, and then?
I think we're getting the adder of the fair market value with the offer that we have currently, and so I'm good with letting it go.
I don't think we're going to be able to afford it. The way it's time to put it on there, I don't know if they're also going to stand that long. The way I understand it, they kind of need an answer right away, right?
As soon as possible.
I don't think they look at different options.
And I think the offer's about half what we paid for it, which is really pretty good.
Or we don't use it. When we tried, just didn't fit.
What?
Changing the way we normally use them.
The law doesn't require us to put it on GOV deals. There's no reverse bidding law.
The practice has been, you know, we get it the way we get rid of it.
We just want to make sure that people aren't selling items that are surplus without some sort of approval or some kind of process in place.
We end up getting a lot better prices off what we, if we've heard on one of the two sides. I don't know anything about this, but I know when they ask the prices for equipment and stuff, we think it'd be, you know, $3,000 or $4,000, for example. We end up getting $5,000 or $6,000. So that's, I'm not trying to stick my nose in AMS business.
If y'all want to do it that way, that's fine. Just tell the people, they're probably going to get it probably about $20,000 cheaper than.
You can put it on there.
Buy it from GOV deals.
And you can set a minimum amount. I mean, you can.
So how long do we have to put it on there?
It doesn't, you set the time.
Yeah, I mean, you could put it on there for a week just to see if you get a better offer.
I'm fine doing that. I just don't want to lose our opportunity here, because I don't think we would get near this far. And they may say, no, screw it, just go ahead and put it on GOV deals and we'll buy it from you all for $12,000.
Well, the vehicles that we put out, number one, they're not worn out because their potential buyers are here, Chris. They're good vehicles, but anyway.
You put your daughter in it?
Yes, I would. I think that with his vehicle, though, it's more of a technical vehicle and it's only going to... I don't know if, I understand what everybody's saying, but I don't know if you can get... I mean, if you're wanting to sell that vehicle, you can get 50% for it. I don't know, man.
So usually when you, so usually when you sell a used ambulance online, they're going to people who are using them for other industries. They just kind of refit them. This vehicle would be very difficult for them to refit.
It's technical. Specialized, I guess, is the word.
I'll be honest, I haven't bought on GOV deals or Purple Wave. Once in a while, you see fire trucks, but I've not seen any serviceable ambulances that I can remember. And I check it quite frequently, so, you know, again, I'm not trying to stick my nose in it. Just from our point, we've seen better prices, but with a technical vehicle, it's still serviceable. It's a little different if someone buys a motor grader and sticks it down on, you know, Joe Blow's construction company.
And mine's just more of a process, that if you're going to go outside of how we have been doing it, maybe we set some guidelines that they need to bring it in here or something before the...
See, you don't set precedence.
Correct, correct.
But I think that's what we just did, was they brought it to us and said, hey, we found an option here. Can we forego putting it on these other sites? So.
I'd be concerned like Jeff brought up, that since you have a set price, that they may come back a bit on one of the sites and actually get it cheaper than that, so.
Yeah, I'm more for taking the money and running. I know it came up from the first price, first offer we had on it, it came up another $5,000. So I'm like...
In my opinion, we move forward and we sell it. We take what they've offered and we move on. I mean, there's going to be different instances where, yeah, maybe for the bulk of stuff, we surplus stuff. I mean, they let us know what this offer was, and I think it's a good offer, and I think we should take it, so.
Yep, I agree. And I mean, I think that's pretty much what the policy is. If they're going to go around the way we always did it, then they would come to us.
Right, we just want to make sure that people don't just start selling things to whoever for whatever price they decide, without going through some sort of process. So if you're not going to do it through a competitive bid to sell it, that they have to come in here and get permission to do that.
Yeah.
I move that we sell the ambulance.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Do you want me to go get the title, so you sign the title today? Or can I wait for the title to match to it, so?
Okay.
Wait till we get a check?
Was that the surplus title that was on there, then?
No, it's a different one.
Okay.
So you got a different surplus title you need to sign?
Okay, signing of surplus title.
This is the other ambulance that was actually totaled.
We're still waiting on the other one that?
Yes. I understand it's still getting reviewed as to the estimate for repair.
Alright, I move that we sign the surplus title.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We had discussion of HR Consulting Agreement that's been moved to 625. Bill, do you want to give an update, since you're here, on what all has been going on?
So last week, the FEMA representative was in. So we finished the city, and then Friday evening at about 7:00, we finished the assessments for the county. Basically, looking at all the residential. So I don't have any information yet from them exactly what they came up with. They kind of take that and they'll do all their figuring, and then we'll see what comes in on the PA stuff as far as our public assistance would be our next step. Hopefully, we get the declaration so we can move on that. So right now, all that has been done. I mean, we did some damage assessments originally, the night of the tornado and the next day. And that weekend, we did our own. They come in and do a complete theirself. So then we'll take that and compare it to what we have and what they have, and go from there. So that was one big hurdle. Now we're working on the floods. Two, they want to see flood damage. Yesterday, I drove most of the Osage River and looking at the areas that's impacted. So our worst areas, of course, are down in the Osage City area, Marina Road, Lila Town, all down through there. They're not even assessable where you can look at them. The water is level with the roads down there. So they did do some flyovers last week by helicopter with the other counties. Callaway County, Boone, Cooper, and they came down on Missouri River and up the Osage to kind of get some ideas there where they could see the main damage. So right now, from what I know, is our individual assessments are done on residentials and city and county, and now they're going to be doing assessments on the flood. So we're going to be working two things almost at the same time. The only good thing about it, once the declaration's made, that will include flood and tornado. Once it's received, it'll all be in the same group of stuff. So I think Larry and him have done a super job out in the county picking up debris. City's done the same. Things are looking a lot better. Our Red Cross Shelter closed last Wednesday night in Russellville. So they were able to get those families out and moved into somewhere else. So that's one thing that's out of our, that was able to get completed. The points of distribution center at Capital City West Christian Church Warehouse is still going. They changed their hours from nine to five. It was on weekends. They wasn't getting anybody there on weekends, so they now close on weekends. But that's going very well, too. A lot of donations are still coming in. Thursday morning at 8:00, we'll have a meeting with what we call our Short-Term Recovery Group. We'll have that at Memorial Baptist Church, they're across from Cap Region. And that's a lot of these organizations that's here to help people with housing, some finances, helping with gas, a lot of this other stuff. So that'll be at 8:00. What we did last week, we had the mark, again, remember the mark that was set up at the Link. That's a multi-agency resource center where a lot of people was able to come right after the tornado and see what resources was there for them to have. So from this short-term recovery, we set up a mini-mark. So we went to the Red Cross Shelter one day from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at night. And last week, we went to the Quinn Chapel Church from 3:00 to 7:00 at night to try to get these people some of the things they need. So we'll re-meet, like I said, Thursday morning, try to regroup, see how that plan worked. Do we need to do something else? And then we're moving, of course, into long-term recovery for that. So got a lot of help there with United Way and Bax, a lot of different organizations, Catholic charities, there's a lot of them, they're doing all the case management. So a lot of help there for the people, so going pretty well. We're just waiting and seeing if we get the declaration, then we can move forward.
So you're keeping us informed about FEMA coming in and stuff? And they just drive around and look at stuff, make notes?
Mm-hmm.
So if somebody's needing disaster aid or they're eligible for it, how do they find out? Who do they go to first?
Well, I...
Maybe they're not as savvy as some of the other people. I mean, if it's me, I know I'm going to be making some calls to try to figure it out, but some people maybe aren't as capable.
The best thing I can say, Jeff, is I think in the past, what they will do will come in and open an office. And people will be able to go in there and talk to the representative to actually see. Individual assistance is a little bit different. If you have insurance, they're going to look at that. But if it's beyond that, basically, they're going to offer small business loans, SBA loans, same way on businesses. So a lot of that stuff, it's going to depend on what they had to do, I would say, above and beyond what would normally. Like our PA stuff, like Larry and them with Public Works, a lot of stuff we've had to do other than our normal daily functions, that's what we'll be able to recoup. Residentials, it's a fine line, and we've not had to do that here in many years. It's the hardest of all the grants to get, is the individual assistance grant. It's very, very seldomly even given, but I think with our magnitude, we'll probably be okay with it, hopefully. But I think those people that have those questions will have somewhere to go.
So they'll have an office set up somewhere? I mean, this is so widespread that...
Yeah.
With tornado and the flooding.
They did that before, remember the old Frontier Building on Christie? For years, that was actually FEMA's office, the whole lower level. For years, that was actually FEMA's office, the whole lower level. They rented that and, or leased it, and people could come in there and do their claims. And they may do that for several counties. I mean, it could be Colke County, it could be Miller County, and all of them, they'll have one centralized office. So, once that's set, people know where to go to get their assistance, and you just gotta basically sit down with them and see what they got to, they can help with. It's a little difficult.
They said that Public Works was picking up debris, but I mean, it's really still just woody.
Vegetation and.
Just lambs and branches and.
Yeah.
Stuff like that. And then we kind of had a deadline of the fifteenth or something.
It was Sunday.
Right, so we'll be finalizing all the, the final pickup with all that.
We'll probably keep Burnside open for a couple of weeks, just so we can make sure it's all burnt down before we shut it down.
And then, did we have any public infrastructure damage to, to anything that we know of so far?
I don't believe we did, did we?
Not at this point, as far as, we were very fortunate as far as with the tornado going as close as it did to ourselves out there. We didn't have any damage in, in Montcella Road, so.
We didn't have any.
We don't have.
Yeah, we had some.
Here?
Here, fine.
Did you?
Sheriff's Department's going to launch.
Did you?
Carnegie's got two windows. Of course, all air conditioning units are fine, damn it.
Of course. Don't be going up there shooting at them.
We don't.
See, it doesn't make any sense. Doctor will point, all of his got wiped out, and.
We don't know about the roads that are flooded yet.
Yeah.
We have to get out and evaluate that once water goes down. But what we're seeing so far, we're not seeing any damage like what city had over in North Death City, so.
About like Rock Creek Road since W's closed and all the trucks coming through there is. If those, that road gets wore out and shoulders get just demolished. I mean, they had one truck turn over there already, and.
Other than that, I haven't been down there just since the truck turned over. It's, that road used to, I mean, every time we have a flood, W goes under.
It doesn't go over or under for four weeks at a time, though.
No, but it has gone under where it, it takes a beating, so.
Probably about out of saying by now, anyway.
We didn't have any tornado sirens got hit or anything?
Nope, all operated fine.
Did have to repair one or something here?
Uh, yeah, there's a little, a little breaker in there, but other than that, they all work fine. In fact, the one Friday, we got set up just about time FEMA called, said we're in town, so we got it all done, and it, it was very well. No, we did very well on the siren.
One thing, one thing the staff did find out in talking to FEMA, seeing them last week, we are gonna bill charge our generator time. So, kudos to the commission. I know it's previous CEO of letting us install one. We've been in the world of hurt, we've been without electricity out there, couldn't have done any repairs and pumped any fuel.
Yeah, but basically, they'd take one to the city, and they had to hook it up just so they'd have fuel.
Art ran from the night, and it was actually on when I got there. I was the first one at the shop. Lights were all on, but it's dark everywhere else, and it ran until, I can't remember if it's Friday night or Saturday night. Talked Three Rivers through, they hooked us back up, so it did well. We did have a service technician come back in and serviced it again after the event just because it ran so long and continuous, so.
And we wired the ESP building, if you remember too, and we was able to use it, because we had no power. We pulled the generator and plunked it right in, fired it up, had plenty of lights. Actually, that was gonna be the EOC at the very start, and then we lost power, so we had to change it to the city. So, I'll keep up on as much as we can. We'll hopefully find out more this week, I'm hoping, and get some stuff going. There's already a lot of rebuilding going on in a lot of areas, so that's good to see people rebuilding, covering stuff up, so it's gonna be a lo, long time. But I think all in all, the city and county both done very well in, in helping the people wherever they can, getting the debris out of the way, and, and the streets cleaned up. It is, it's quite remarkable to see that.
Well, while we're on public work stuff, thanks for getting out there yesterday, too, out there on Bald Hill. Already had comments this morning from people about it, because they were pretty worried about that, because that failed. It's been a while back, but it lifted that thing out of the.
Well, that was actually the pipe up above, Jeff. This one has, the one up above, I don't think they got a gate in front of it. We're gonna talk landowners, see if we can take it down and give the, the gate back to them, but just to keep that happening. What was it, just a grate in front of it that brushed debris back into? We sent guys out late last night, right quick time, and they got it cleaned up and opened up, so. What we were concerned about is rain coming in tomorrow. Making sure we didn't have an issue. We've got it out and opened up.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Not a problem.
To mitigate any other damages down there.
Is that on the moral, backed up?
No, it's, they're all on Bald Hill.
Oh, right.
They're all through the bars, but I'm not saying that.
A lot of water.
And Missouri Association Counties thanked us for offering the use of the old health department. They're gonna try to find something that they only have to move once, so.
I'll learn to find, try to find something permanent, if you have.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway.
They've found anything, so they're working from home, I think, temporarily.
Yeah, but they thanked us, so. Anything else?
So, have you had discussions with our HR consultants? I mean, are they working on getting us some numbers back on something?
Yes, we did send the contracts yesterday, and I sent them to Jill to review. So, she's working with them on getting that, so that's why I can forward them to you if you guys want to look at them before.
I'd just like to see them before we talk about it next week.
Okay, I'll forward you those, and I'll forward you any changes that they have.
Okay. Jen sent us these purchasing policies, and I read through them. I don't know if you guys got the opportunity to, to read through them at all, but. Like overall, they were pretty good. I had a few things here that I haven't highlighted yet, but I wanted to go through them again. And one was the section on administrative. Can't find it out, but. Administrative authority. Basically, had to do with other funds, but I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, but it's one section I want to look at a little bit closer. And then the. One thing we should look at a little bit closer to is this conflict of interest policy portion. I don't know. Obviously, that's a good thing to have in there, but we just need to make sure that that's. Not too over burdensome. You guys might look at those two things, but. Anyway.
Anything else? You want this contract back, Larry? That's when we're gonna take action on it. I decided to sign it.
Why don't you just hang on to it, and Eric can just call you when it, when it needs to be signed.
Okay.
That saves the trip up there.
Okay, well, I can hold on to it. Okay.
We'll probably have word on that yet this week.
Yeah.
Larry, did you, you sent us that thing on the UE lawsuit? Is that, I didn't read through it completely, so. Anyway, is that not really going anywhere, or are we still settled on two thousand thirteen, or?
The assessors asked for a review of the hearing officer's determination. I got another one, official notice yesterday from, I think from the clerk's office, where it gives a little more detail, and, and the comparisons that the Ameren's expert witness gave doesn't, they don't think it are correct based on information that Ameren provided to start with, so. Don't know how long that review will take. I think even after the state tax commission, the actual commissioners make their decision, it still has to be approved by the circuit court and the appeals court, so two thousand thirteen isn't done yet.
It's never gonna be done. Appeal, appeal, the appeal. Appeal of the appeal.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, thanks for sending us that, though, because I, I think, oh, there you got, got a copy from Steve yesterday, too.
Yeah, we're kind of out of the loop and all that.
Just write the checks.
That's all I got.
Move, we recessed till four thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.